The October 3 meeting of the Stillwater Planning Commission will now come to order. It will be the process this evening to call for items on the agenda. The commission will hear briefly from staff first, then the applicant and/or their representative, then open the public hearing and hear from those in favor and/or in opposition to the request. When you come to the podium, please clearly state your name and address for the record. Before closing the public hearing, both staff, the applicant, and/or their representative will be provided an opportunity to respond to provide additional information and answer questions. After all interested parties have spoken, the public hearing will be closed, and we will hear closing remarks and alternatives from staff. With that, we'll move into the public hearing portion of the agenda, and I will just make a housekeeping announcement. Item B, which is a short-term rental for the property addressed at 1202 West Stonecrest Avenue, which was tabled from our September 19 meeting, is being withdrawn at the applicant's request, so that will not be heard this evening. We'll start with the first item on the agenda, which is a short-term rental, STR 0128, and we'll hear from staff first.
Good evening, Planning Commission. My name is Diana Hood. I'm the Associate City Planner. As stated, this request is for a short-term rental for the property addressed as 1020 West Graham Avenue. Here is an area map of the subject property. It is located within the RSL zoning district for large lots, single-family. The Planning Commission is the hearing body for short-term rentals, and the hearing is to be held similar to a specific use permit hearing, except there is no staff report or presentation. As a reminder, the city cannot enforce private restrictions or covenants, but the Planning Commission can give way to them as part of the deliberative process. Are there any questions for staff?
I don't see any. Thank you. At this time, we'd like to offer an opportunity for the applicant to come forward. You could state your name and address for the record, please?
Travis Doyle, and I'm representing the 1020 West Graham property.
Do you have anything you'd like to start off with?
I haven't done this before, so this is a little nervous. This is a property amongst a total of three families, all Stillwater Oklahoma State alumni. We were very excited about this property because of our passion and excitement about being able to come to Stillwater. We try to attend a lot. I live in Frisco, Texas personally. The other two business partners live in Tulsa. Over the years, as our young kids have come up, we've had challenges for the hoteling situation. They're pretty expensive. If you've looked, they're up as much as $1,200. My son, and actually, the family, the other two families, we all have young boys and girls, and die-hard baseball fans, die-hard Oklahoma State fans, and so we come up often. But then, when we found an opportunity to come up and then find a property that's close to the baseball field, close to Teebin Pickens, that's what we got excited about. The intention of this property is not a revenue generator necessarily. There's other places in the state to get that. And we do have some other Airbnb properties around Broken Bow and others that we have experience doing this. So we do have experience managing and facilitating these properties. But we are sensitive to the Stillwater public. We understand, and didn't expect it necessarily in conversations with the previous homeowners about the dialogue. We were kind of having some, you know, we asked them, made it clear what we were doing, and they thought it was a great idea. Of course, they were selling their home, so different story there. Our intention is to use as owners, but we're not in a situation that makes sense for us to just do that as out-of-pocket. It's not a vacation home. So our intention is, when available, to use it short-term for certain events, but predominantly try to use it for ourselves.
You open for questions from the commission?
Sure.
Okay. Commissioners, do you have any questions for the applicant?
Yeah, typically from neighbors, we hear concerns about, we hear concerns about parking, we hear concerns about turning into a party house and those kind of things. So it looked like I saw something from Airbnb. So I guess I was curious, especially given you had prior experience with Airbnb, what kind of restrictions or caveats would you put on renting this to kind of allay some of those concerns?
Yeah, we don't want a party home either. It causes damage. We're not going to allow pets in the facility. That's also can cause some damage. Because of certain laws, you have to adhere to local municipality rules, sound barriers, all the other things. We tend to put in restrictions and be very clear about expectations of how they manage and participate in the home usage. Our ideal, and who we're talking to mainly are friends and family who are adults who have kids already in school, so we're talking about parents' weekends and graduation weekends. And right now, the big boom is, of course, football game weekends. Outside of that, there's not a lot of traction in Stillwater, but those are big-ticket items, you know? And, you know, we do plan on structuring restrictions, but we have limitations about what the local laws, you know, we can adhere to that, right? As far as parking, the property does have a pretty big parking facility, so there's a lot of parking, so it shouldn't be on the curb. But yeah, we don't want a big, massive house. We want to build it around for young children to mirror ours. There is a bunk room for younger children, but that is what it's meant for, not for a party house.
Who would manage it locally, since you guys that are owning it, your families are out of town?
We do have a management property that will be paying fees to help, but the other two partners are in Tulsa, and one of those own 100 acres just outside of town who comes up. He's building, so he's there. So they're about an hour drive away, so they're here a lot checking on. And we do have a local cleaning facility here and lawn care. Some of those, we're still kind of working out. We wanted to make sure we were respectful of this process. There is a little bit of a precedence. There's a few other homes in the area that are short-term rentals. There was one who has already started renting before they've even applied, so we want to make sure we did the steps correctly and honor the community. We mean this from bottom of our hearts. We are OSU alumni. My dad went to Old Central before he went to the Navy. My wife's family had nine, her mother's had nine siblings. All of them went to Oklahoma State. All four, all three families are Oklahoma State alumnis, all but one wife. She was confused, apparently, in life. The rest of the five of us were Oklahoma State alumnis. So our kids love coming here. I have a 10-year-old son who lives and dies for that baseball field, and that's our intention. That was why we were attracted to the property. We also didn't realize there's a history until we started having the conversation. There's a, I'm sure the neighbors who are here probably know that the gentleman who originally built the house, who was a, hopefully I say his name right, is Professor Manier, who was, the article that they left behind was when Teebin donated his first dollar to Oklahoma State, it was in this gentleman's name, because apparently he started the Geological College. And so when we saw that, it was just for us as OSU alumni, it just was magical for us. So I understand the concerns. I wish I could answer all of them. Our intention is to be very respectful and attentive to the community, because that's why we have it. It's not for us to make money, because the numbers don't work for us to make money, so...
So I think, just to kind of elaborate on some of the rules we typically hear from applicants are setting some quiet hours, setting kind of a time that nothing will happen outside, and activities would be moved indoors at a certain time of the evening. Some of the other things would be like a minimum age to rent. Also, some things like it would have to be an out-of-town person that's renting. There'd be a limit of number of people that could stay there. Those are the sorts of things that we usually hear, and I think, I think both of you kind of touched on it, is, you know, what happens on trash day? Is trash being taken out? That sort of thing, and of course, parking is the big one, so...
Yeah, those are all things we did here, too. Of course, I want to hear what the concerns are, so we can address those, because we just don't know what we don't know. But that would be the same expectations we would have for someone who moved into one of our neighborhoods. Again, our hope is this is a focus on parents who come here for Mom's Day, Dad Day weekends, you know? That's what we're trying to gauge it towards. We're going to hopefully not make it look like it's a great party scene for those who want to do that, from how we're setting up the property.
Would you allow one-night rental?
No. No. Two-night rentals. And I agree with no local. Now, college kids can put their parents on. We do have, in all of our other properties, we have 25 years or older. So, you know, again, noise restrictions, those are municipality structures that we would mirror that, too. But if there was a need to do some more to make the community more comfortable, I think we're open to any idea. We want to be a good neighbor. I understand this is a little bit different for this community in this probably area, but if we were trying to make this a, something that not, it wouldn't work. It's just, it's not close enough to the things that people want to make maybe that kind of scene, I guess.
Any other questions from commissioners? Thank you. So at this time, I would ask if there's anyone in the audience this evening that would like to speak in favor of this item? Seeing none, I'll ask if there's anyone in the audience this evening that would like to speak in opposition, and I do have a list, and so I'm going to go down from this list and just go through the names. Stephen Burke? Yes, if you'd just come forward and state your name and address for the record, please?
Okay, I'm Stephen Burke, and I live at 1123 West Graham, just down the street from this house. I guess my main concern is that changing this house into a short-term rental is going to change the atmosphere of the neighborhood from being a quiet, peaceful neighborhood, where the children can play in the streets, to a place where there's going to be heavy traffic, folks coming in and going, that we don't have any idea who they are, because they're not a part of the community, they're not a part of our neighborhood. And then, I also have a concern about people coming in and, you know, throwing a party, because they are coming to Stillwater for some kind of event, and when people do that as a tourist or whatever, they do party and leave a noise, leave a mess in the yard and the street sometimes, and it just changes the whole atmosphere for the people that are long-term residents of that neighborhood. And I'm really concerned that it's going to lower the quality of life for the people that live in the neighborhood, and ultimately, lower the property values, because people won't feel comfortable living there, they'll begin to sell their homes, and property values will go down. So those are some of the concerns that I have with this being a short-term rental. And I understand that there's good intentions on the front side, but I don't know what's going to happen with the short-term rental over the next three, five, 10 years, or whatever. And I am a long-term resident. I've lived in Stillwater for 62 years. I've been in this neighborhood for almost 20, and I'm not planning on going anywhere.
Anyone have any questions? Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, the next name I've got on the list, Travis, we've already heard from you. Emily, is it Thaden? Yeah, if you'd come forward and just state your name and address for the record?
My name is Emily Thaden. I live at 1023 West Graham Avenue, which is diagonal across the street from this property. I sent in some visual aids. I don't know, do I have access to those?
Yes, we, yeah, we have them.
Okay, you guys just, oh, okay, we're not showing them, all right. Yeah, so I have lived in that neighborhood for 12 years. There've been a lot of changes. One of the major ones are influx of investors and rentals. I thought I'd have the visual aid, it's okay. As I was pouring, I've been going through the city code and the city ordinances a lot, and I happened upon, so there's a stated purpose of residential districts in Stillwater, and I won't, sorry, there's a fly. I won't read the whole thing, but I will say residential, the purpose, residential districts are designed to protect the residential character of the included areas by limiting commercial and industrial activities, encourage a suitable environment for family life, and on and on. Again, I won't read the whole thing. But bearing that in mind, we're a neighborhood of about 65 houses, I sent you guys a map. My objections, again, it's not personal, it's not specifically against this. My objections to having more short-term rentals in this neighborhood can be broken down into two basic things. I have basic neighborhood concerns. So with so many investors coming in, we are, as Stephen said, we're kind of losing the character of our neighborhood. It is a nice, quiet, family neighborhood, but it is absolutely being taken over. I found it kind of interesting, so I did attend the last Planning Commission meeting two weeks ago, where you were discussing the property that's been withdrawn. And what I found interesting is that one of you, I don't remember who, stated that the vast majority of short-term rental applications are approved, just outright approved. But in the case of that property, it was owned by an LLC, and whoever it was, again, I don't know, I'm not going to, I don't need to ask, it just couldn't get passed, it was owned by an LLC. Well, of 65 houses in our neighborhood, 13 are owned by LLCs. One of those is an LP, again, it's a business designation. Like, that's 13 of 65. 18 of those 65, I know are rentals. Sometimes it's hard to tell. If anything, that number is higher. Only five so far have short-term rental licenses as of September 21, when I did the information That's a lot, you know? And I want to state here, I don't have an issue with any owner-occupied rentals or long-term renters who are a part of the neighborhood. I'm, this is not, I'm not blatantly anti-rental. I'm not. But this is different, to have a stream of people that we don't know coming in and out all the time. It's just fundamentally different. It's a little, like, I looked through the Payne County Assessor website. It's a little difficult to tell exactly what goes on in each property, but my best guess is right now, of the 65 houses, only 37 are owner-occupied. We're at 57%, and there are several that are being remodeled that don't have anyone living there. That's usually a sign of things to come. There's going to be more of these. So my question, one of my questions to you guys is, what is the limit? I've looked through all the ordinances, I don't see a limit. That's kind of scary for those of us who live there. It's just, it seems like the city's kind of creating a safe space for investors to come in and do what they want, and we just have to put up with it. Those of us who live there invested both financially and personally in this neighborhood. The people who don't live there, some are probably great neighbors, some are, they're just fine, but they do what they please, and I guarantee all of my neighbors here, we have a laundry list of things we have seen over the years that renters do, and it's not okay, and it builds up. It's just one little insult after another. They see this neighborhood as a business opportunity. There are cases where they lie to the sellers about what they plan to do. Again, I'm not, I'm not saying that's what happened in this case, I don't know. I know of at least two cases where they just flat-out lied. It's not a crime, but I'm going to remember that. So some of the things, like, as you guys have already kind of preemptively mentioned, in our neighborhood, parking is only allowed on one side of the street, but you'll have cars on both sides, parking right by the "no parking this side of the street" sign. They will leave their trash in recycling cans out on the street, and I know the gentleman said that they do adhere to that. I have personally pulled those cans in. I did just this last week. They're left out into Friday, and I get tired of it. Again, I don't need to go through everything. We all have a list. I've never called the police so much in my life. It's, I hate being that person. I hate it. My bigger concerns, as a parent, raising young children in this neighborhood, are the safety concerns. So I sent a picture of West Graham Avenue, looking east down the street. You guys can see that? We have no sidewalks in the neighborhood. Not one. It's a, again, it is a quiet, walkable neighborhood. People walk a lot. I've had to teach my kids that if a car is coming, get on someone's lawn, it's okay, they won't get in trouble. There have been plenty of speeding cars just coming through. There's no through traffic. We are, there are only three streets in. If anyone is coming in there, they're there, you know, for a purpose, but we have these blind curves, and I've personally seen people just zoom straight through. Another current concern is who's staying at these rentals? It's not really comforting to hear that they're going to be out-of-towners, like, who knows? Who's vetting these people? We have an elementary school at the end of the street, and I'm not trying to be alarmist. I've looked up the laws in Oklahoma for residency restrictions for those on the tax offender registry. It's 2,000 feet, they have to be far away from a school. This is well within that. Who vets them? I don't think there's a good answer. And again, we just don't know our neighbors. Like, it's hard to feel like you're living in a safe neighborhood, where you see, even if you don't maybe personally know every neighbor, you see their cars, you kind of get to just know a property, like, oh, that's the person with the maroon car, and, you know? But there's none of that. There's just going to be, there's all these new cars. I would also like to know what our recourse would be if we have a bad experience, because again, that's a really, like, they are renting to someone, we don't get to know. Airbnb is a part of that. We don't get to know. What is our recourse? And I also feel like the sheer number of rentals has just caught me by surprise, living on the north side of this neighborhood. One of the maps I sent you, so people applying for the short-term rental are required to contact everyone within 300 feet, that's the one. And I was like, well, how is this taking all of us by surprise? And then I mapped it out. It's getting a couple of us, and if someone doesn't think to say anything, or, and some of those in that very circle are renters or landlords, like, it's, it's quite inadequate for a neighborhood of our size, I would say, the large lots. So those are my main concerns. I'll kind of just end it there.
Any questions? Thank you, appreciate it. Thank you for the, I do want to thank you for the items. This was very helpful. Thank you. Next name on the list is Sarah Foss. You just state your name and address for the record? Thank you.
I'm Sarah Foss from 1010 West Graham. I live next door to the property being discussed today. Thank you all for the opportunity, for your time, and thanks as well to the owner for showing up and allowing us to have an important dialogue. I want to kind of take my time to both express my opposition to this rental, but also express my concern about this trend. I'm kind of echoing what Emily said about our city code and kind of the stated purpose of residential districts. It seems to me that the short-term rental trend does the opposite of protecting the residential character, and that as a property owner, as a mother with two small children, that's concerning to me. I looked on Zillow, and I compared this with data in the property records, and Emily shared her maps with me. And since 2020, it appears that 13 houses in our neighborhood have sold, and of those, nine have become short or long-term rentals, or have applied to be. That's two-thirds. That just, again, this trend is really, really concerning to us. Similarly, as Emily mentioned, only being notified within 300 feet. A lot of these that sold in 2020 were located over on Eskridge, as you can see on your map, and that's outside of the 300 feet for me, so I didn't know about this. We normally have regular neighborhood gatherings. The pandemic caused those to be suspended for a few years, and so I think that this really did catch a lot of us by surprise. And so, again, I say this because I don't want the new owners to feel like this is some kind of vendetta against them specifically. We feel like we need to just be opposing every single one of these to express our concern. So kind of my two big concerns are safety. Short-term rentals in particular have a constant turnover of residents. I looked up the vetting process on Airbnb, because I remembered back, like, a decade ago, when I made an Airbnb account, I needed my name, my address, my phone number. I think I held my driver's license up to the camera, took a picture of my face, and it confirmed it was me. That's still the same process. So anyone with a name, address, phone number, and some kind of legal ID can make an account. 10 days before, then a guest is scheduled to stay, Airbnb runs a background check. But according to their website, and I quote, "There may be gaps in public record searches due to the way certain databases are maintained, and online databases might only be periodically, I'm sorry, might only be updated periodically by local governments, which Airbnb doesn't control or direct." So by admission on their own website, they say that this is something, but it's insufficient, and they say that owners ought to kind of engage in their own vetting process through reading reviews. I appreciate that the property under question today says that they mainly want to rent out to people that they know. I guess my concern is if it's listed on Airbnb, or does that mean they're going to reject someone who applies to stay that they don't know? Why then run it through Airbnb? I guess I just have questions about it. It sounds like a nice idea. I have questions, though, about that. When the host doesn't actually live on the premises or actually interact with the guests, there's also no way to verify that the person actually entering the house is the person who made the account with the Airbnb. A lot of Airbnbs use lock boxes or have some kind of code. I've stayed in Airbnbs like that, and you simply show up, you never see the host, they never see you. As long as they're not getting complaints, they really have no idea who it is that's actually staying in their property. And so, this is my neighbor. This is a concern for me. It's largely a trust system, but in a neighborhood, and again, as a mom of a five-year-old and two-year-old, two little girls, we plant our front yard a lot, they go to the elementary school down the street, that's just, that's concerning for me. We've already had some experiences with inconsiderate guests at other Airbnbs, like, one guest was sitting on the front porch in his underwear, blasting loud music from a pickup truck, middle of the day, just things like this. You know, again, we hate to feel like we're having to police our neighbors and police our neighborhood, but like, that's, to walk my five-year-old past that home, like, that's concerning. The number of guests, I think, is also concerning. This is a five-bedroom house that's under question. Others in our neighborhood have been four-bedroom homes. That's a lot different than renting, to me at least, than renting a room or like a detached, you know, one-bedroom studio-type apartment on someone's property where the owner is there. I don't have a problem with that. It seems like quite another matter to rent entire houses that have capacity for eight to 10 guests. And so, again, we've talked about increased traffic. Parking, it's already a big issue in my neighborhood. I have two rentals across from me. My side of the street is already filled with cars, like, all the time, and so I'm just concerned, you know, what, more, more short-term rentals in my neighborhood, what that's going to do for an already pretty bad situation. And then shortage of housing. You know, this is a neighborhood that's close to campus, it's close to elementary school, it's in the middle of town, it's, and it was an attractive neighborhood, I think, for families and for folks to come and to live and really become part of Stillwater. It's also priced typically pretty attractively, homes are affordable in our neighborhood, and I think we have a shortage of that in Stillwater. And so I'm concerned that if these properties continue to be bought up and used in this way, what that means for people trying to become homeowners and live in their homes. So again, to try to, like, think of some solutions, I want to complain. I would love for the city council to consider limiting the number of short-term rentals in a defined area to preserve the integrity of a neighborhood. the number of short-term rentals in a defined area to preserve the integrity of a neighborhood. I would love to maybe have a conversation about zoning our neighborhood, like Westwood did, to only allow, you know, a certain number of unrelated people to live in a house. I'd love to see that radius of 300 feet expanded considerably so things like this don't catch us by surprise, and so that we can have productive and meaningful conversations before situations kind of escalate like they have in our neighborhood. I'd love to see hosts required to live on-site. But, you know, kind of thinking about other places around the country. Chattanooga recently just paused processing new applications while the city talked about it and had community forums to talk about it and try to reach some kind of compromise. I'm not against Airbnb. I think it is useful. I use it myself on occasion. But I am, I guess my issue is just that it seems like it's happening very quickly, without a lot of foresight, without owners being able to really articulate the practical steps they're taking, without any discussion with neighbors ahead of time. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you. The last name I have on the list is, I hope I get this right, Elizabeth Grubgeld.
I'm Elizabeth Grubgeld, and I live at 1100 West Graham Avenue, two doors down from the property that is in question. We moved to this neighborhood in 2008, and I sometimes describe myself as a refugee from College Gardens. And anybody who has been over to College Gardens knows what I'm talking about. When we moved to Stillwater in 1986, it was a beautiful neighborhood. Owner occupied, for the most part, long-term owner occupied. And it became really reprehensible because of the lack of any kind of intervention on the city's part, in that case, on student rentals. And as everyone knows, front yards became parking lots for trucks. Beer cans became lawn decorations. As many students as a landlord could cram into the property seemed to be the case. We called the police constantly over late-night parties. I feel a little frustrated that sometimes it seems that we have been given a false choice. Either approve an Airbnb, or the owner's going to turn it into a student rental. And I certainly don't want any more student rentals in our neighborhood. And I would say that this particular owner does seem to be very concerned with the upkeep of the property. I walked by there today, and I saw that they had put turf into some bald spots in the lawn, and they were watering already. And I believe in his, I believe his sincere desire to do the right thing with this property. But right now, our neighborhood is in such transition, and having seen a neighborhood in Stillwater go downhill very, very rapidly, I'm really concerned about this one. I would agree and support and affirm all the different solutions that Sarah Foss just outlined, particularly pausing the whole application process until the city takes a very careful look at neighborhood integrity. Because neighbors are people who know each other. They're people you can call if your car won't start. They're people you can have a 4th of July celebration with, or you can have a block party, or you can call if you need something. Short-term rentals do not provide that neighborly experience, I guess you could say. Some students are very nice, and they are helpful in that way, and they do try to join in on neighborhood activities, but they don't have an investment in the community in the way that an owner-occupied resident would. So I guess I am also saying I would like to, despite what I believe to be the honorable motives of this owner, I wish he could simply buy the house for his family, who wants to come and see sports, and let his friends stay there, work out whatever private arrangement he would like to. But it's not appropriate for this house to be a short-term rental in a block which is, as others have said, is a very short distance from an elementary school, in a block that's filled with children, in a block that already has too many cars and too much traffic in it. So I guess I am asking the city to just stop and really take a serious look at what we call the Will Rogers neighborhood, and to try to keep that sense of community and integrity to it.
Thank you. Those are all the names that we had on the list. Is there anyone else in the audience this evening that wishes to speak in opposition? Yes, if you'd come forward and state your name and address for the record.
So actually, I'm a neighbor at 1015. I'm not really speaking in objection or in favor. Actually, I applied for a license as well. This is my first time to apply for a license. It's scheduled to be hearing in November.
Sir, it'll have, if you want to speak on this, the public hearing regarding a specific property at this time, but staff can speak to you after the meeting regarding questions you have about your upcoming application.
Sure, sure. So there's conflict about saying-
Right now, the public hearing is just about 1020 West Graham.
Right, right, right. Sure, sure.
If you'd like to speak about that property, you're more than welcome to.
We can have someone speak to you after the meeting.
Sure, sure, sure.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I want to say thank you for letting me hear your concerns. Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. With that, we'll close the public hearing. And if we could, staff has no, has no findings, but you can give us our alternatives.
That's correct. Staff has no findings or recommendation. However, your options for tonight are to approve the application, defer for additional discussion, or to deny the application.
Thank you, Diana. Commissioners, thoughts?
I'll just make a comment as a relatively new commissioner. I think this is an unhelpful system that we have. I feel like we're giving folks in the 300-foot radius of a property, a, I won't say false sense of hope, but some idea that they can change the outcome of the deliberative body. But I feel like us as a council tries pretty hard to just not play favorites and do what the rules tell us we should do. And so far, I mean, it's been pretty disappointing for the folks that have spoken out, just in the couple of meetings that I've been to. And so I want to be a good neighbor and good citizen on the board, but I also, I do, it's hard to hear the comments against when I would have them if I were not aware of, I don't know. I feel like there's kind of a challenge. So I want to say that I think all the things that were said today were very persuasive, but ultimately, I struggle with feeling like those types of arguments should be able to move the needle on what the rules are. And so I think some of the alternatives, especially the lottery or whatever that idea was on sort of like a limited number of slots or something, could be very good. Because I'm an economist, and I think about, just in terms of incentives and equilibrium, and it seems like the neighborhood is in transition, and will probably continue to be so until, you know, prices move things back into a different direction. And so during that process, as a city, either we have to let the market dictate what happens, which can be uncomfortable for the people involved, or we have to set policies and rules that are controlling those outcomes. And it seems like what we have right now is sort of a set of rules that makes people feel like they can do one, but it's the other. So that's not necessarily a deliberative comment for or against. I just wanted to, after a couple of these meetings, with most of the docket is about these SDRs, it's a frustration, I noticed, so.
I think that's well put. I share your frustration. I think it seems like we've seen a lot of short-term rentals come before this body in the last several months. And the recourse that we have as a planning commission is very limited. As I looked at this and I saw the address, I know I've seen some of your faces recently on a couple of other items. And so I'm thinking, we will definitely hear from the neighbors, because I know, I know how passionate you all feel about your neighborhood. And as I was thinking through this, I'm thinking, gosh, it would be great, and it was mentioned twice, I think, this evening, if this neighborhood could do something like the Westwood Overlay District. Because my first term as a planning commissioner was over 20 years ago, and I watched the same thing. I watched the decline in the Westwood, what's now the Westwood Overlay District, College Heights area. And I think some wonderful things have gotten put into place, and it really stabilized that neighborhood that was beginning to erode. And it's become a very nice neighborhood once again. And I did, I did want to thank you, Ms. Thaden, for putting together this document. And I think the thing that was most telling to me was this document that shows the percentage of your neighborhood that has changed. You know, I went through and I looked at this, and I came up with over a third of your neighborhood is now rental, either LLC, LP-owned or privately owned, and then the game-day houses that are also the LLCs. And that percentage that becomes transient in nature does change the character of a neighborhood. It just does. I experienced that in a neighborhood further out. But I had a neighborhood where roughly 80 homes, it was less than 20%, but it began to feel very different. And so I can understand that feeling of unease. Similarly, you know, we didn't have any through-streets either. And so we knew the cars that belonged in the neighborhood and those that didn't. And if someone was visiting a friend, you either begin to recognize that was their friend, or that's a strange car. And all of us recognized a strange car that would drive through. Do you know that person? No, do you? No. And I think that's what makes a neighborhood, is you recognize your neighbors. It's gotten to the point for me on here, and so, you know, I think we've talked before about affordable housing stock, what's available here in Stillwater, character of neighborhoods, and just some of the general, just, you know, being a good neighbor. You know, the parking, the trash, the noise, all of those sorts of things, party houses. It all, it all kind of comes down to, you know, the quality of life, right? So I reached out today to staff and included the city attorney's office, and I asked, as a planning commission, can we make a recommendation to the city council to suspend these short-term rentals? And because of the way that things are structured, that cannot come from this body. So I would encourage those that can to do so. Because it seems to me like we're getting these requests so quickly that it doesn't allow the neighborhood an opportunity to gather your thoughts and figure out, do you want to become an overlay district like Westwood and find something that works for all of the owners in the neighborhood? What would that be? What would it look like? You know, maybe there are still, you know, some rentals in there, but there's some rules and some overlay to what those rentals are. And the quality of life is sustained. And like I say, over at the Westwood District, I've really seen that come back and become a very vibrant neighborhood again. So I, Andrea, share your feelings. I really feel like our hands are really tied. You know, we can, we could find grounds to deny. I'm not sure what they would be. We could ask for additional information. And so I'd like to hear from the rest of the commission on that. And I do know, staff has mentioned to us that they are working on doing this. They're researching to try to find a proposal so we can have a better grasp on the short-term rentals. But right now, we don't have any mechanism to put a pause on it from this level to do so. Those are my thoughts.
That was helpful. Remind me what the cycle is for the, they come back up for renewal. Is it annually?
I believe so, yes.
Okay, so maybe that answers one question that was asked, which is, what's your recourse as a neighborhood?
I can address that if you would like.
Go right ahead.
Not only does it come up for renewal, but anytime that there is an issue, it can be reported to the city clerk's office. And if need be, we would bring it back for a hearing to possibly revoke the license. This would be the same body that would hear that. But unless it complains made, the license or permit will stand. And of course, at renewal time as well, we can look at previous complaints as well and look at that.
And I think, I mean, just speculating for, I think, how we feel, we would take those very seriously if people came to us and they had, they had evidence that the fears that they had going into it had been realized, then we would have something to deal with that's concrete.
Correct.
So that would carry weight.
Yes, and just to reiterate, what Chairman said, staff is actively working on every revision of the code to present to the city mayor's office, then to present eventually to city council for discussion and more guidance on what the future will look like for these permits. At this time, that will take some time, obviously. So for now, the ordinance, the current process stands. If a moratorium were to be in place, that would be something the city council would have to enact.
It's just like deja vu all over again. We've had this conversation so many times, and we should. I know the chair and I have both related our past and our neighborhoods, the impact of rentals upon a neighborhood that was primarily owner-occupied, and what that does to a neighborhood. I knew people back more than 20 years ago who lived in College Gardens, worked with them. We saw what happened and how the neighborhood deteriorated as a result. So anyway, my suggestion is the neighborhood and the planning commission look at parallel paths. I think the idea of working towards an overlay district for your neighborhood, similar to the Westwood neighborhood, because you have a blueprint there, I would start doing that. I don't think it's too late. I also think, I had recommended, I don't know, two, three months ago, that staff look into what could be done to revise, modify, whatever, the rules pertaining to short-term rentals. And it appears that's what's being done. I also suggested, and this may be unworkable, is have a task force between the planning commission and city council to have an open meeting, so there could be a discussion at that level, too, before the planning staff presented something. But anyway, what I'm saying is I think a parallel path should be done here. Work on an overlay district for the neighborhood, and city staff, planning commission, and city council can look at ways of modifying the short-term rental rules to see if we can limit the number of them and maybe enforce, well, create more definitive rules for how these rentals are run. I have no idea how to present a motion with all that.
The motion options would be a motion to approve, motion to deny, or table for additional information to a date specific.
I think with the rules constituted as they currently are, I think I'd like to, I've never done this before, motion to approve. Right? Is that how you say it?
That's how you say it.
All right, motion to approve.
Second. Second then.
We have a motion and a second. We shall now vote. Motion passes 4-0. The next item on the planning commission's agenda this evening is miscellaneous items from staff, planning commissioners, commissioners, or the city attorney for discussion and possible action. The only item listed on here is the next planning commission meeting is October 17. And with that, the last item on the agenda is adjournment. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn. Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn. We shall now vote. We shall now vote. We're having a technical glitch to adjourn. Okay. One more time. Third time's the charm. Motion passes. We are now adjourned.